Here.
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 Thank you, Carol. Can I ask that you all rise for a pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending. And for those of you watching at home, for joining us this evening, I know it's been a long journey, one that started way back in early fall with Jeff and all the administrators in the school district building up to this moment. Just a quick recap, we are now in our hopefully final or next to final meeting on passing a Board of Ed budget for the 2020-21 operating school year. Before I turn it over to Mr. Grippo, the next item on the agenda is public or audience input. And as always, we welcome audience input, so if you have any comments, questions, concerns, ideas regarding the budget, we would love to hear from you. And if you do come up to the microphones, just please, I ask that you state your name. Your address is optional.
I'm girls at a gate.
Oh, okay.
Good evening. Having paid a...name is Jack Bestor. I'm at 45 Tresser Road. Having sat through all of these budget meetings, it's clear that you guys have a very daunting and somewhat overwhelming task before you, and it's a wonder you can get through it all. I've tried to get through it all by reading the budget online, and it's very complicated and a difficult process to get through. At the same time, I want to use this opportunity to share with you a concern that I've shared with you in the past about the use of electronic technology with our students in the classroom. And my basic...I sent you all an email today outlining some of my concerns, and one of the concerns, I guess, you know, from a budget perspective, what I want you to do is I want you to do what you can to hold off on the purchase of new Chromebooks and improved smartboards that were requested in the proposed Cheshire budget. The rationale for that is, as you know, Superintendent Solan has pointed out that we have in Cheshire a Cheshire Strategic Planning Initiatives Group that is studying these issues that came out of the Personalized Learning Task Force and probably other issues as well. It seems logical to me that before we purchase more, put more expenditures into electronic technology for students in the classroom, that we demand the evidence that such devices make clear, undeniable, and verifiable research requirements such that they've been both...they've been deemed both beneficial and appropriate. The reality is, is that it's a...this is a very controversial issue, and I'm afraid at times that there are differing points of view, and I want this...I'm hoping this board will take a very active and direct role in making sure that these differing points of view are considered and reviewed before recommendations come back for more purchases of technology for students in the classroom when we really don't know. I mean, the marketers are telling it is good, but that doesn't mean that it's met research requirements to be effective. And that means Chromebooks, smartboards, and e-textbooks. And I know, because I've commented in the past about the use of e-textbooks, and I know it's also going to be hard to push back against some of this stuff, but the reality is, it hasn't been proven to be all that effective. I was with a bunch of my...with my children who are all very well, and nieces and nephews and their husbands, they're all well-versed, they've got technology up the wazoo, and they all have their iPhones that they rely on. And I asked them the question point-blank. I said, "When you're reading, where do you prefer to read?" And they prefer to read paper, all of them, all of them, all connected to iPhones for information constantly. They prefer paper when they're reading because it allows them to comprehend what they're reading better. So I'm very hopeful that this board will take a stand and make it very clear that before we put millions of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars into new technology that are...that's basically unproven, and in a sense, putting valued taxpayer dollars to something that may either be frivolous or perhaps simply unnecessary in classroom instruction. The last thing I want to say is I want to be very clear that this has to do with regular education purposes and not purposes for kids on IEPs for whom it is determined that they need certain electronics to allow their learning to go forward. I worked in special ed for many years. I know how critically important it can be for certain segments of the population. But I'm very concerned that we have pre-K and elementary school students on technology that they don't need to be on right now because they really need to be spending their time doing the hard work of learning how to think, learning how to get along with one another, as well as to read, write, and do arithmetic. Thank you. As always, I give you a hard copy.
I was just about to ask.
Give you a hard copy because I don't know that my...the words that I speak into the microphone are saying it as well as I hope I'm saying it.
Mr. Bestor, do you know, I did receive your email earlier today. I believe that's what you covered. Unfortunately, we don't have a correspondence section on our agenda, but the next board meeting, we'll read your letter into the record.
Okay.
Thank you. And for anyone that just joined, hopefully you all had a great outcome tonight, but this is the 2021 budget review meeting with the Board of Ed. We'll be discussing the budget in a little while. The current section that opens is public audience input, so if anybody has anything they want to talk to the board about, or ideas, questions, concerns, now's your time.
Hi. Members of the Board of Education, with this budget, you have an opportunity to make a meaningful difference by supporting girls' ice hockey. For 10 years, girls from Cheshire High School have been part of a co-op ice hockey team called the Blades. The team includes girls from three schools, Cheshire, Amity, and North Haven. We play a full competitive schedule against other high schools in Connecticut. Most of those other high schools, including Amity, fund girls' hockey, but as you know, Cheshire does not. Nevertheless, year after year, girls from Cheshire have consistently demonstrated their interest in ice hockey as members of the Blades. At your meeting on January 9th, we presented our case, "The time has come for Cheshire to recognize and fund girls' ice hockey." We talked about the inequity of funding boys' ice hockey while ignoring the fact that girls play ice hockey, too. We talked about how we pay $1,800 to play where the boys pay only 225. We asked for parity. At that meeting, we did not formally make a Title IX claim, but our administrators nevertheless looked into the issue. We applaud them for doing so. They examined the issue closely, they listened to us, and we believe that they recognize the inherent inequity of not funding girls' ice hockey. While they do not believe that a Title IX issue currently exists, they concluded that the situation requires attention. They acknowledged that year after year, we have demonstrated sustained interest in ice hockey, and they decided that we deserve recognition going forward, although not as an official sport. After hearing from us and after doing their Title IX analysis, our superintendent put forth a budget that for the first time recognizes and funds girls' ice hockey. We are grateful that Superintendent Solan, Assistant Superintendent Solano, Dr. Gadd, Ms. Hussey, and Mr. Trefon recognize that it is time for Cheshire to fund girls' ice hockey. We sincerely thank each of them for their support. Now it is time for you, the Board of Education, to act. We appreciate that you permitted us to put forth our case at the January 9th meeting. You heard a lot of general statements to support...of support from many of you, but some have said that recognition may open the floodgates. To that, we ask you to consider that recognizing girls' ice hockey is about correcting inequality. The current system tells us that we are not valued as athletes because we are girls. We ask you to acknowledge that the time has come for change. We ask that you approve the superintendent's recommendation that the town of Cheshire recognize and fund girls' ice hockey. We are, however, asking for one small revision to this recommendation. We are asking that the girls' ice hockey be added as an official sport today, not at some later date. Besides that small modification, we do not want to lose sight of the fact that Superintendent Solan, Assistant Superintendent Solano, Dr. Gadd, Ms. Hussey, and Mr. Trefon have responded to what we believe is a gross inequity. Again, we thank each of them for doing so. Times have changed, girls play ice hockey, and we should be treated equally. Thank you, the Cheshire members of the Blades, the Blades team, future Cheshire members of the Blades, and the Cheshire Girls' Ice Hockey community.
Thank you, Nadia, and entire team. I'm pretty certain we'll be talking about this topic when we get down to the 2020-21 operating budget. Thank you for your input. And I just want to reiterate again, I think we said in a couple of meetings, since I've been on the board, we've had some great presentations in the past, but by far, this group has been the most professional, well-articulated, and cordial I've seen in a long time. Not knocking anybody else, but you've all...I think I said it to Mr. Natali today, you all raised the bar on what the community can do with the board in discussing topics like this and, you know, working together. So thank you for your time on this, and hopefully, I think you guys had a game this evening? Did you guys win? That's all right. But you gave...that's okay. That's awesome, though, but, you know, again, appreciate your passion for doing the game, coming here, and you probably, you know, if you're probably signing for midterms, you got that going on tonight, so thank you. Anybody else in the public?
Hi, I'm Carrie Button Coyle, 225 Elmwood Circle in Cheshire. Dear Boards of Education, Mr. Solan and the Cheshire community, my daughter is Megan. She's a freshman and a member of the co-op girls' ice hockey team from the Blades who represents Cheshire High School. She spoke to you ever so eloquently at the January 9th meeting, pledging to continue to stand for women's athletic equality until justice prevails. She stood in front of you because she loves her love of ice hockey, the injustice that she was experiencing, her dedication to her teammates and future teammates, and for the love of Cheshire High School, the school where her father, her uncles, her aunt, her cousins, and her brother all attended. Cheshire loves hockey, girls love hockey, and today we have invited female students from DOD that we recognize from our hockey community that want to play high school hockey. They represent only a small portion of how Cheshire Girls' Ice Hockey can and will grow. We know you have very...some very difficult decisions ahead of you, and we are grateful that your consideration to support in some means the girls' ice hockey team. But we still have concerns that need to be addressed today. At the January 23rd BOE meeting, Mr. Solan stated that Cheshire's girls' ice hockey has been in existence for 10 years. 10 years. As a freshman mom, 10 years means that this issue has gone unnoticed for 10 years. These female athletes' concerns have been swept under the rug by Cheshire High School for 10 years. These...one moment. It's 10 years that...where these girls have had no recognition until last year, when they were finally added to the yearbook. It's 10 years of parents overpaying. It's 10 years of parents driving their female athletes to all their practices and games while they watch the boys board a bus. It took 10 years to get to this point in time, to this very meeting, and we can't be asked to wait anymore. What we are now experiencing is 10 years of female athletic oppression coming to a full boil. Today, we heard...we will hear about transportation. But I want to keep you in mind that you already fully support boys' ice hockey transportation, 30 boys over 10 years. They are transported to Wesleyan and North Haven, plus games with an activity fee of $225 or less, because that activity fee was raised within the last couple of years. The boys' team is on ice on average of five days per week preferred, where the girls have paid between $15,000 to $18,000 to be parent-driven to all practices at Hampton and games roughly three to four times a week. Due to the availability of ice time and the fact that our players are too young to drive, these are major struggles among parents to be play...among...excuse me. There are major struggles among parents to be...get their players to practices on time. I'm only one of them. With both my husband and I working in New Haven, I cannot make it back to Cheshire without jeopardizing my job. We all...we, all the parents of these players, strongly urge you to please consider transportation of your students, your players. My daughter's current academic interest is astronomy, and she can't wait until she turns 16 to apply for NASA summer fellowship. It's a big goal, and it's not impossible. Nothing is impossible if you have the heart to make that change. Work hard, show dedication, and perseverance. I know Megan can do anything she puts her mind to. Besides, these meetings with the Board of Ed has given her one hell of a topic for her college essay. I bring this up since many things can change with time. Even 10 years of throwing these girls a bone can end now with your support. Like Megan, all these young women have stood up front of you today. They work hard. They are dedicated to their team and their school. They have proven that they will fight for a good cause with diplomacy, and they are even ever so resilient. This injustice can stop now with each of you. Look at these young women and tell them they don't deserve fair and equal treatment. It's time to recognize that Cheshire has female hockey athletes who deserve your respect, not petty excuses. And let me remind you, they are hockey players with more stamina than you and me, and they will be here every year until change is made. And I'd like to leave with a quote from somebody I admire and adore, my daughter Megan. From the January 9th meeting, she asked you, "Would your actions today be any different if your own daughter stood here wanting to play ice hockey for Cheshire High School?" Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. If you don't mind, I took a lot of notes. I'm pretty sure I got your message. I probably missed a few points. If you'd like to send that to the Board of Ed, we'll put it in our record. Thank you, or whenever. Thank you again. Is there anyone else from the audience who'd like to speak with the board? Excellent. Thank you, everyone that came up. And just a reminder, I turn it over to Adam Grippo, who's our Finance Committee Chair, talk about the Finance Committee report and the motion about the budget. If there is a motion, there will be time before the board votes on motions to get public comment on that, too, so you can stick around if you like. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I turn it over to you for a Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The result of the Finance Committee, which occurred last Thursday, I believe, we passed a motion, and I'll read that to you now. The Finance Committee recommends and forwards to the full Board of Education a budget of $75,302,143, an increase of 2.65%, or $1,945,632 over the 2019-2020 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Grippo. So that was the report, but I believe you have a motion below.
I'd like to make a motion. Move that the Cheshire Board of Education submit to the town manager a budget for the fiscal year 2020-2021 totaling $75,302,143, a reduction of $1,027,909 from the superintendent's proposed budget.
Thank you, Mr. Grippo. Is there a second?
A second.
Faith, half a second. Discussion, and just to reread the motion. Move that the Board of Ed...the Board of Education submit to the town manager a budget for the fiscal year 2020-2021 totaling $75,302,143, a reduction of $1,027,909 from the superintendent's proposed budget. Is there a discussion? While everybody's still answering. Recognize Ann Harrigan.
Are we discussing, or should I move to amend?
Well, so that's a good point-of-order question, Ann. Absolutely, so I suspect there'll be some amendments this evening. We can discuss the current motion. If board members have amendments they'd like to make, is this a motion? We can make those anytime. It's...if you have one, Ann, it sounds like you want to make an amendment.
I will move to amend.
Ann, what is your amendment?
I move that the Cheshire Board of Education submit to the town manager a budget for the fiscal year 2020-2021, a budget totaling $76,342,452, a $12,400 increase from the superintendent's proposed budget, which would cover the girls' ice hockey.
Thank you, Ann. I'll reread the motion before calling for a second. Ms. Harrigan moves to amend the current motion that the Cheshire Board of Education submit to the town manager a budget for the fiscal year 2020-2021 totaling $76,342,452, which is an increase of $12,400 from the superintendent's proposed budget. Is there a second? Captain Helen seconds. We are now discussing the amended motion. Discussion.
Although I support the notion of adding additional money to support the girls' hockey co-op team, I do not support the superintendent's...or Ann's motion to support the superintendent's budget plus additional money for the hockey team.
So I agree with a lot of the speakers from the Girls' Hockey Association who have come forward over these past budget meetings to discuss. What I see, and what I think you see, is this is a matter of fairness. It really is. And fairness, as we all know, doesn't come free, it doesn't come cheap. This is going to cost some money, and the superintendent spoke to us last meeting and suggested that a good place to start would be $12,400 to get the girls' hockey team started for next fiscal year, which I think is the right way to go. However, I don't see how we can decrease the superintendent's proposed budget by more than $1 million and talk about how much we support having a girls' hockey team funded and supported in our operating budget. And so that's why my...I'm asking for an increase to the superintendent's proposed budget. For that reason and many others, I feel that where we would have to cut that proposed budget is...would keep us, the Board of Education, from fulfilling our obligation. I would like to read, it's very short, to remind us all what the board member's responsibility CGS Section 10, 2020, duties of Boards of Education shall provide an appropriate learning environment for all its students, which includes four things. One, adequate instructional books, supplies, materials, equipment, staffing, facilities, and technology. Two, equitable allocation of resources among its schools. Three, proper maintenance of facilities. And four, a safe school setting. I don't...I see many things in proposing draconian reduction to the superintendent's budget that is being offered up tonight that would prohibit us from fulfilling these duties that are bylaws. And so for that reason, I accept the superintendent's budget, and I believe that we should put in that budget and increase also for a girls' hockey, to support the girls' hockey team.
Thank you, Ann. As always, we appreciate your insight, and thank you for referencing that statute, which, by the way, is in our bylaws, in case folks are wondering. Just a reminder to the board, I don't know if...and I forgot to ask you, Mr. Solan, if you sent the letter that went out to the Blades' parents, if they went out to the full board?
Yeah.
So just to be clear, as I was asked this question at the last meeting, I've consulted with Superintendent Solan on this. I think he sent out a letter to the Blades' group parents yesterday, but for the board members to understand, the...whether it's this proposal or others, the $12,400 does not cover the full costs associated with girls' ice hockey, as I believe it does not cover transportation, which I believe ranges between $12,000 and $24,000, depending on the number of... So the point is, even adding the $12,400, the superintendent's original proposal doesn't... not to speak for the group, but bring them to equality in their eyes, but absolutely covering additionally players to start is a great start. And the other thing that we want to clear, too, is, and this wasn't a letter, that if more than eight members happen to join next year, and that'd be a wonderful thing, but that's telling us the cost came down to a point where the threshold is now open to a lot of folks, then the Board of Ed budget would absorb the additional participants if there are more above beyond that. So I just want to clarify that, in case there was a question for us. Any other comments from the board members on the current motion by Ann...the amendment by Ann Harrigan? Yes, Mr. White?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. With regard to...specifically with regard to the girls' ice hockey, I want to be supportive, but we also do face budgetary constraints. With regard to the proposal made by Ann for the $12,400, I can support that with regard to the additional transportation. I'm not supportive of that at this moment in time, and the reason I say that is I want to take a measured approach to this because I...although we've heard from the superintendent that he's not expecting additional groups to come forward, I just, from a budgeting perspective, I want to take it in a...take this in a measured way. So I'd be happy if you and other groups came forward next year, next year's budget. But for right now, that's where I stand with regard to the girls' ice hockey request. And with regard to the much larger part of the...I'll just call it a million-dollar reduction, I'm comfortable with it overall in the school budget, so I'm not going to support Ann's amendment.
Tim, are there any other responses from the board members to the budget? Okay?
I want to make one quick response.
Yes, Ms. Harrigan.
And say that it's not equality in their eyes, it's fairness and equality, period. It's a matter of fairness.
Thank you, Ann. Seeing as there are no other Board of Ed comments, before we take a vote on the current amended motion, is there any input from the audience on this motion? So please come up to the microphone, I'd love to hear from you.
There are probably just two of us here, maybe three. When you all talked about what that...I know it's not for the amendment that Ann has put up, but when you get to Adam's proposal, it would be nice if you sort of...Adam could explain where the cuts were being proposed, go over that again?
Absolutely. Yep, that was Thursday night, but if it drops back to that motion, we're certainly going to it. Any else in the public? Any else in the public?
Yes, my name is Natalia Di Natalia. I just have a question, a process. I guess is the originally proposed budget include funding for girls' ice hockey? And is Ms. Harriman's amendment seek to add the transportation? Is that what I... To understand? I just... I'm not clear on what the originally proposed budget, whether that includes something for girls' ice hockey or not, and whether the amendment is in addition for transportation.
So great question, Mr. Natalia. We had a pretty long discussion Thursday night on this, so unfortunately, you guys are busy, didn't have to be here. Went into some details. So as I understand it, and Mr. Solon can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the original budget that was put forth to Mr. Solon from all administrators and the school district with their wish lists, et cetera, I believe included funding for girls' hockey. I don't remember how much it was, I think it was for four folks. Mr. Solon's budget proposal that he recommended did not include it. And after last week, after Mr. Trafon, Marlene and Tracy Hussey, after all their work and recommendations, Mr. Trafon asked that the four... Funding for four players be put back in. Last Thursday, Mr. Solon recommended that that funding should be for eight players, and that funding certainly only covers the cost of participation, less the two twenty-five participation fee. So the twelve thousand, four hundred does not include transportation, just the cost of per person after the fee.
And is that in the originally proposed budget?
No.
Okay.
It was not.
So Ms. Harriman's twelve thousand, four hundred amendment is for the coverage of the eighteen hundred minus the two twenty-five?
Correct.
So it appears to me that Mr. White is not... In not supporting the amendment is intending not to support the transportation, but it appears that he is, in fact, if Ms. Harriman's amendment is to actually fund the eighteen hundred minus the two twenty-five, I just am a little confused.
Let me just add one more thing. So it was not in the original superintendent's proposed budget, but the budget that came out of finance Thursday night?
Yes.
The modified version did include twelve thousand, four hundred to cover the cost less transportation.
Okay. So I see you're correct, Mr. White. I understand Mr. White's position at this point.
So I believe, and Mr. White can speak for himself, but I think he supports the fees, but at this point, wait and see approach to the rest of transportation.
Understood. I just... I wasn't clear on what was in the originally proposed budget, and now I understand Ms. Harriman's amendment to be for additional funding for transportation. And I guess...
So, no, no, not transportation.
I guess maybe Ms. Harriman's shaking her head.
Yeah, please, Anne, if you want to explain.
I would explain it this way. I would explain it as our finance committee is proposing a drastic reduction in what the superintendent put forward for a budget, all the while saying that they support that the twelve thousand, four hundred to support girls' ice hockey is in that with the reductions, but that money has to come from somewhere. And I'm saying that where they're asking to cut the superintendent's proposed budget is unacceptable to me. If you want to add support for girls' ice hockey, and this... All of this is not even broaching the topic of the transportation. But if you want to support the twelve thousand, four hundred for the girls' ice hockey program to get that up and running for next year, then we have to increase the superintendent's budget, not decrease it by a million dollars.
Thank you for that clarification. And to my... I'm sorry.
Mr. Grippo, do you want to respond?
Yeah. I would like to disagree with most of what Ms. Harrigan just said about drastic recuts to the budget and not supporting hockey at the same time. The amendment, or the original amendment, not the one that we're discussing right now, does include girls' hockey for twelve thousand, four hundred, which I'm understanding is actually, that number's not correct. It's actually should be twelve thousand, six hundred, because I think eighteen hundred minus two twenty-five, I think it's twelve thousand, six hundred, and maybe we'll correct that before we're done here. And the amendment which passed out of finance does seek to pay for the reductions through line items that we identified. So it's, you know, how Anne portrays the amendments that we put forth is her opinion, but everything that's going to be coming out of here tonight is still an increase over the budget from last year. So just want to say.
So I'll turn it back to the audience. So, Mr. Natalia, any other...
Yeah, so I just, based on that, I guess that I would urge the Board of Education to support the amendment, because it, based on my understanding from Mr. Solon's letter, would allow the girls' ice hockey to be recognized as a, quote, "official sport." And so, again, thank you very much for your careful attention to this matter, and you're...
So I want to clarify that. I think the letter doesn't mention anything about being an official sport. Do you want to clarify that?
Supporting the twelve six does not make it an official sport. It means that participants are not paying, or they're paying exactly what boy participants are paying, but transportation is not included in that. That transportation under an official sport would, as Mr. Perigini said, you know, could vary based on the number of participants, anywhere from roughly eight to twenty thousand dollars.
So for transparency and just clarity, it's still kind of... We know it's a real sport, but the point is, it's not a CIC St. Jean team that we have for boys' hockey or others.
It'd still be considered a club.
It's a club sport. And I think that's the... Again, I turned this into debate talk, but that's the tier I think we're working at, is it's somewhere between club and an actual CIC sanctioned team here.
CIC recognizes it, but if we have it as a club, then, you know, recommending that the cost of participation be covered, but to add the cost of transportation, that would be another, like I said, depending on participants, eight to twenty thousand roughly.
And your recommendation still holds that it should be funded as a club sport?
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess I would urge the board to approve whatever funding is necessary to help it be recognized as an official sport. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Natalia. Do we have any... Any other members from the audience?
Yeah, I'd like to make just a quick comment. So I get the funding. This isn't still equity, just so we're all clear. This is a step towards it, because what we're talking about is one step towards that equity. The boys still have six sheets, the girls only have three. The transportation numbers are probably a little overstated, because we have to pair up with two other schools. So you're putting that number in, assuming that they would be doing the same thing, if you know what I'm saying. So when we take a bus, we take a bus for the... Typically, the whole team. So like this year, we only funded three bus trips. So I know that the ask is for much more than that. So just wanted to point out two things. One is, it's a step towards equity, it's not even close to equity. And two, that the amount we're asking for of the reduce... Of the overall budget and the reduction in the budget and the amendment is way to the right of the decimal point as a fraction of it. So we're not even close to a... It's a rounding on what we're talking about, these numbers. So I get the fact that you can't prove everything, but, you know, we're begging for pennies here. So that's it, thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, it's Mike Crowley.
My name is Jessica Weskey. I live on St. Loh Court. I have twin seventh-grade daughters who play ice hockey, and I wanted to lend a voice to the fact that in addition to these incredible high school-age girls that came and spoke, not even so much for themselves, but for the kids they don't even know that are behind them, including my daughters, who are on the ice now, and a few who are joining us tonight at DOD and in elementary school. I wanted to emphasize that there's a wave of girls coming. There's a contingency of parents and children even bigger than what's sitting here today. And what's occurring to me today is, if we are not distributing our funds and our recognition equitably, then aren't we tacitly approving distributing those two things based on gender? That's what's really hard to wrap my mind around. Equitable distribution of recognition and funds even goes beyond requesting more money in addition to or regardless of cuts and proposals. And that's really all I wanted to put forth.
Thank you, Jessica. Do we have any other members from the audience?
Bruce Linder, 652 Ashley Court. Just a very brief point. I don't want to lose sight of the fact that this is not just a hockey and a girls' question to echo the comments before. There is a wave of girls coming up, and these girls don't just play ice hockey, they play field hockey, and they play lacrosse. And we know of families who are making the choice to send their kids to private school so their girls can be in a hockey program. And if you look across the prestige schools in Connecticut, they all support ice hockey. So, you know, what's in it for everyone here who are part of the high school community beyond ice hockey, you're going to start losing some of your better girl athletes to private schools, because they support ice hockey, like other premium, top-tier high schools in Connecticut, which is another great reason why we should consider funding it fully. Thank you.
Jamie Ferguson. I just wanted to clarify that when the Board of Ed makes a recommendation pursuant to the superintendent's budget, and you have those account and line items, once you've made that commitment here of, I don't know, say a hundred thousand dollars in a... I don't know. Sorry, drawing a blank. Like a fund for cleaning supplies on the floor. Are you married to that hundred thousand dollars for those cleaning supplies? Or once you've made the decision and the allotment has been set forward, then it's an administrative decision how the funds are appropriate and actually spent? I'm thinking of how when the town council votes yes or no on the number of the budget, or there's a... Whatever they approve, it comes back, and then you figure out how you're going to work with that number. I just wondered if it was that same type of parity from this board's recommendation, or are you tethered to those account numbers and assignments of saying that twelve thousand, six hundred that's being discussed, is it just all in the same pot, and you hope that's how it will go? Or is it kind of earmarked? I just wondered how that... The cuts are distributed that way. Thank you.
So, thank you, Jamie. I think she said her name, but we know it's Jamie Ferguson. Who's been attending these meetings religiously, so thank you. So I know Vincent and Jeff could chime in, but whether it's increases or decreases, the board goes through the budget, line item and subaccount, looking for areas that they would like to adjust. And those are recommendations, if this comes forward. General motions, when given to the full board, for example, assuming this goes back to original motion in a little bit, there should be discussion on what those line items were considered Thursday night, and we'll review them again. That final number that comes out of the Board of Ed tonight, if it is tonight, that will go to the superintendent, at which point he could take that final number and find other ways to meet it or exceed it. But fast forward, we have until February 15th to get a budget to the town manager. Town manager is going to... He or she is going to make their adjustments to it, either increase or decrease it. Then it goes to the town council for a thorough analysis. I think by late April, May, we'll get a budget number back from the town council. And the town council does not tell us, you know, as you've probably seen, Jamie, we looked at your budget, these are line items we think you should go after, they can't, and they will not do that, they just give us a total number. There will be additional discussions in Room 207 in Town Hall. They will have a couple nights where they review our budget, we'll most likely be there answering questions on other areas that they may look into. But I'm pretty certain they're taking all the information that we've had in these meetings, public feedback, what the superintendent recommends in a decision, but to your point, whatever comes back to the superintendent in May, whatever that number is, they have to find a way to achieve that. So it's... Could be the line items, it could be others.
So I just want to clarify that that means if the board presents a budget to the town council that's more than a million dollars less than what the superintendent says that he needs, even though you would like ice hockey to be... The girls' ice hockey to be funded, you can't guarantee it if you're not fully funding the budget that he's told you he needed to have some of those employees and other... Not to put it on... I just... I find it odd to say, let's add this twelve thousand, which we all want to do, but at the same time, then you're pulling a million over here off of the budget in another area. I just want to make sure of like how, A, they're protected, but then also you have what the resources you need to fully staff those other... Those other needs.
So the board ultimately makes a determination this evening about line item adjustments. So they could reduce some line items up or down, including, you know, the addition of the twelve six. Then that number, as Tony said, that, and those line items go to the town manager, who may but rarely adjusts that. We present to the council in great detail through late March, early April, April fifth... By April 15th, they establish a budget. That number, total number, not line items, comes back to us. We finalize it as a board at that point. And that, you know, I... Oftentimes, the council has made a reduction to that budget, so it sparks further deliberation on our end, as Tony said, in late April, early May.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. I was just going to chime in for what it's worth. The motion came of finance, I'm not quite there on the bottom line number. However, I do believe that budget proposal could absorb twelve thousand, six hundred. We found ways in our budgets over the years to compensate for certain things. I think someone mentioned this is kind of like, you know, pennies on the dollar in your scheme of things. So in my opinion, whether it's this proposed motion or what came out of finance, that twelve thousand, six hundred is there. And we'll get to that detail hopefully a little bit, but thank you for your feedback. Seeing as there's no other audience coming, I call for a vote on the amended...
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Giat, 83 East Gate Drive in Cheshire. I just wanted to take a moment just to, you know, let everybody know that my daughter, Izzy, is a freshman at Cheshire High School. And, you know, as a further point about someone who mentioned, you know, fractions of pennies, if you will, for the increase in the budget, really, my opinion, it really should be something that's doable in order to improve school satisfaction, you know, school awareness, school spirit. She... And as well as all the girls up here, right? They've really found a passion in the sport and to something that could be able to continue the school spirit and, you know, just the drive. I think it's something that should definitely be recognized, as well as something that's equitable among the sports and the teams here at Cheshire High. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I didn't catch your first name, I'm sorry.
Bill Giat.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep.
Seeing as there is no really anymore audience, but at this point of the meeting, I'm going to call for a vote for the current amended motion on the table, which is, and I'll reread it for the board. Move that the Cheshire Board of Education submit to the town manager a budget for the fiscal year 2020-2021 totaling seventy-six million, three hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars, a increase of twelve thousand, four hundred dollars from the superintendent's proposed budget. All in favor? All opposed? Faith, does she hand up an okay? So the motion has failed to pass five to two. We have now reverted back to the original motion on the table, which is that the finance committee recommends and forwards the full Board of Education a budget of seventy-five thousand, three hundred and two dollars, one hundred and forty-three cents, a reduction of one million, twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars from the superintendent's proposed budget. Discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Helen.
I'd like to move to amend the motion to, so that the motion would be that the Cheshire Board of Education submit to the town manager a budget for the fiscal year 2020 slash 2021 totaling $75,923,998, which is a reduction of $406,063 from the superintendent's proposed budget.
Catherine, can you just, the last number again, the reduction number is 460?
406063, reduction. Yes.
Thank you. The motion, the amended motion on the table is, move that Cheshire Board of Education submit to the town manager a budget for the fiscal year 2020, 2021 totaling $75,923,998, a reduction of $406,063 from the superintendent's proposed budget. Is there a second? Ann Harrigan seconds. Discussion.
This motion is on the superintendent's budget, but the motion?
This motion is on the original budget, put before us from the Finance Committee. We fall back, this is amendment to the original motion.
So, I was just thinking all motions would be on the budget. Okay.
So, Roberts rules of order, motion's been forth originally, which still, which just stood until two seconds ago, which was the Finance Committee motion that was put forth. Ann Harrigan made amendment, we voted on that amendment, the amendment failed, it falls back to the original motion. In discussion of the original motion, Ms. Helen's made an amendment to it. We're discussing the amendment. Yes?
So, just to be clear, I fully support the total amount of the superintendent's budget and would, in fact, be happy to vote in favor of the total amount that he requested. However, being as it's, that might be a teensy bit unrealistic. You know, I think, as Ann pointed out earlier, our obligation is to provide funding for, you know, an excellent school system, maintaining our buildings, providing our students with the best education that we can. And in my view, the superintendent and the administrators and all of their staff come up with a budget that they feel is what the district needs. That is what we need. It's not a wish list, it's not, you know, a lot of pie in the sky things that we'd love to have. We've been operating on a very lean budget for the last few years, as Mr. Solan has pointed out during the budget presentation. And part of what we were, what the superintendent was trying to do was to start getting us back to a spending level that supports the needs of the district. So, you know, again, I support the whole budget that the superintendent proposed, and I find it a little odd that we, as Board of Ed, sort of just randomly decide where we're, where we think cuts should be made. And to me, it seems like an arbitrary way. The amount that I'm proposing as reduction, you know, I think that we could absorb it without, you know, skinning the budget down too much. And I am assuming that the amount for the girls' hockey would in fact be part of the budget, you know, we would find a way to fund that $12,600. You know, I just think that when we're talking about taking the superintendent's recommendation and just taking money out off the, you know, just taking money off the bottom line, it is not, that is not to me what I would call fiscal responsibility. And I think it is incumbent on us to really be careful about what we're doing at this point. We all know when this budget goes over to the town council, it will get reduced. And we don't know how much is going to get reduced. And I just don't see the need at this point to start trying to figure out really ways that we can substantially cut what the superintendent has asked for. However, because I'm a compromising sort of girl, I would, I presented this amendment to give us another alternative to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. So, I have a question for you. So, your, so your amendment brings the budget to $75,923,998, which is a reduction of $406, $406,000, excuse me, I wish it was that small, $406,063 from the superintendent's proposed budget. That $406,000, do you have an idea of where the reduction would come from, some line items?
Well.
Because I thought Thursday night, the Budget Committee did a pretty good job going through the detailed lines. I don't think it was pulled out of thin air. So, you know, I think in respect, I'm just curious like what you're thinking. As you know me, any reduction I'm looking for?
I'm happy to.
Where the line is going to have. So, if you can clarify for folks, that would be very helpful.
Let me just find my little notes here. Just to be clear, I did not vote in favor of the motion that came out of the Finance Committee, so that's neither here nor there. So, I do think that we probably could take some money out of the medical benefits contribution amount. I would not want to take the whole amount, but, you know, I could see us being able to maybe reduce it by $339,000 to $350,000. I think we could take some money out of the maintenance repair, but I'm only proposing, I would only look at maybe a reduction of $45,000. Capital equipment, you know, I think, I don't know, but I mean, I'm assuming we might be able to get away with reducing it by $15,000. Maintenance supplies, I think we should keep as high as possible, I would, you know, suggest that a reduction of $12,000. And then library supplies, $5,000? You know, I don't know what's in the library supplies budget specifically, but, you know, $5,000 reduction probably keeps us in a decent place. And then a reduction to dues and fees. See, I think I'm, I think this adds up to more than my 406 because I'm trying to cover the $12,600 as well.
Yeah, I see.
Okay, but that's what I, that was, those were the things that I thought we might be able to do and not really kind of weaken our budget and our, you know, how we're going to move forward. I was really in our two.
The detail. Faith, you had a question?
You just, that was my question.
Okay. Any other comments from the board on the current amendment motion? Tim, how does a hand up first, sorry.
Generally, I agree with it. I know there's a motion coming out of the Finance Committee, though, that I'm going to support, so I appreciate that, talking about the medical trust fund. But for now, I'm going to, I'll end up voting no on this motion.
Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing as there is none, I'm going to call for a vote on the proposed amended motion. I'm going to read it one more time. Move that the Cheshire Board of Education submit to the town manager a budget for the fiscal year 2020, 2021 totaling $75,923,998, a reduction of $406,063 from the superintendent's proposed budget. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion fails five to two. We have reverted back to the original motion on the table, which, I apologize for in this again, just so we're all clear. That the Cheshire Board of Education submit to the town manager a budget for the fiscal year 2021, 2020, 2021 totaling $75,302,143, a reduction of $1,027,909 from the superintendent's proposed budget. Is there a discussion? Yes, Faith.
I'd move to make an amendment. I would move that the Cheshire Board of Education amend the proposed 2021 budget as proposed by the Finance Committee to reflect an increase of $1,846,043 over the 2019, 2020 Board of Education budget. This reflects a reduction of $1,127,498 from the proposed superintendent's budget of $76,330,052 for a total 2021 Board of Education budget of $75,202,554 or a 2.5% total increase over the 2019, 2020 budget.
Just to correct Faith, that's $75,202,554. Thank you. So, move that the Cheshire Board of Education amend proposed 2020, 2021 budget as proposed by Finance Committee to reflect an increase of $1,846,043 over the current 2019, 2020 Board of Education budget. This reflects a reduction of $1,127,498 from the proposed superintendent's budget of $76,330,052 for a total 2020, 2020 Board of Education of $75,202,554 or a 2.52% total increase over the 2019, 2020 Board of Education budget. Is there a second? Mr. White seconds. Discussion. Please do.
I appreciate the comments of my colleagues about our responsibilities to providing adequate instructional materials and equitable allocation and safe schools, but I am also keenly aware of how these budgets affect citizens of Cheshire. In the past few years, we have, I know Mr. Solan likes to say that good schools drive housing values, but we are in a rather languid economy. And as much as I would love to embrace that, I don't see it happening. And our taxpayers are seeing year over year millage increases. That said, I have identified a number of cuts and I'm happy to share them with everybody, go over them, I've been through the books. These are all increases. They're either, funds are either held at $19,000, $20,000, $20,000 or increased at a fraction, a smaller multiple of the CPI. And when you're looking at, you know, 9% and 10%, 25% increases in some categories, I just feel that there is potential room for adjustments, if you guys want them also. And I'm happy to explain as you look at, I've got some here, too, to explain where I came up with my cuts and why. But for the audience, I'm asking for a reduction of $2,326 from other purchased services, line item 590 in the budget. I just, I won't go through the line items, but instructional equipment, $27,500, instructional supplies, $18,031, student activities, $11,347, which would help to offset the funding for the girls' hockey, the women's hockey. Unfortunately, $5,000 reduction in substitutes, $871 reduction in traveling conferences, $19,309 in capital equipment, $3,550 in dues and fees, $10,855 in textbooks, $1,000 in testing and evaluation, for a total of $1,127,498. And these would be in addition to what Mr. Grippo has proposed.
Question. Upon seeing this, I now understand why you hesitated to support my motion coming out of finances. This is even a larger decrease to superintendent's budget than my proposal was. But I do commend you on adding even more detail than the amendment that we had put out of finance. And many of these decreases of the increase are very interesting. So, we'll look at this for the next several minutes. And I do notice here that you did add back $12,600 for girls' hockey. Is that correct, am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a, just a comment on the medical trust reserve contribution. So, I'll just be direct on this one. So, I believe the superintendent's but, proposed budget asks to at least level fund the medical trust fund at $689,000. And my concern there, just for folks in the audience, if you weren't here Thursday, I tried to do this justice in under a minute. So, we pay, it's, the misnomer is, it's called medical trust fund. Basically, what it is, it's a board account where we set aside budget money every month to help pay claims. We are self-insured, insurance company does not pay our claims for us, the town pays it through a taxpayer. So, there's a balance in that account, either decreases or increases in the years, depending on claims experience. Some years, we have lower than normal claims experience, where the account is not depleted as quickly as we'd see when there's years of higher claims experience. I believe two years ago, the medical trust fund had a, hit a peak record, I think close to $5 million, I don't, just under 4. some odd million dollars, which represents, I think, at least at the time, five, maybe six months of claim reserves. We tried to at least budget two months of claim reserves. So, it's, in my opinion, while in the past, in both the board and the town, used offsets in this year's budget, 2019, from the medical trust fund to help pay for some of these things, in my opinion, I think, just looking at the trend of that account, while we're nowhere near, you know, a low level at this point, the claims are coming slightly higher than normal. By, you know, completely not funding, level funding account, I don't want to put the board, or again, this is my opinion, anything can happen with these claims experience every month, but we know that claims tend to trend higher over time. Underfunding this level funding, for lack of a better phrase, in my opinion, may put the board at risk to drop down in two months' claim reserves if it's not next school year, quite close to the end of the school year. And I don't think the board wants to be in a position to, A, either pay for it out of pocket, which is our legal responsibility to exceed our budget, good luck finding that money in my pocket. But two, we don't also want to put the town council or town in a position to suddenly have a situation where they have to either emergency fund a trust fund or plan for a big increase two years out. Again, it's a worst case, best case scenario, so I can't support this reduction. I, although I know you've done a lot of work on these line items and you asked a lot of questions of us, appreciate that, so I know you put the homework into it, but at least that one item alone is, is not something I could support, just for what it's worth. Any other board members?
Yeah, I second the motion and in general, I agree with it, but like I said before, I'm comfortable with what the Finance Committee had done, what they had recommended, and I'm right there right now.
Thank you, Tim. Ann?
So, I have, I have quite a bit of problem with this proposed reduction from the superintendent's budget, which is, what, close to $2 million less than the superintendent's proposed budget for 2020, 2021?
No, let's check that number.
It's a million one?
It's a couple hundred thousand dollars more than the budget from Finance in reductions.
It's, 1,127,498, less than?
Less than what? The superintendent proposed? Okay, so we're only at a million. I still have problems. I have problems with where it's coming from. One of the big... One of the big areas is, as Tony already mentioned, the medical trust reserve contributions. I'm wondering if, not to put you on the spot, but I am putting you on the spot, Mr. Maciana. Do you have a better number right now of where we think our medical trust reserve fund is going to be by the end of the fiscal year?
Thank you. Thank you and good evening. I did share with the board members two documents via email. And actually, I'll pass copies out because I realize we didn't hand them out. So the medical, to answer Ms. Harrigan's question, the medical trust fund balance, I'm estimating at the end of this fiscal year to be $2.7 million. And you'll see that in the sheet that's right on the top. And the sheet is labeled projected estimate as of June 30th, 2020. So we were, we entered the year with 3.8 million. I'm estimating that will be at 2.7 million. And if you look, you'll see that the first six months of this fiscal year, those are the actual claims. We're running about $880,000 per month if you average those six months. But now, over the next six months, I'm estimating claims will average about $750,000 per month. So that will bring us, that will bring the average down for the year, but it's going to bring it down to about $816,000 per month. Also, we'll hand out a sheet that I prepared, and I'm going to just kind of give you the bottom line on this sheet, which takes the detail of this year as the starting point. We'll have $2.7 million in the medical trust fund. If we don't increase the funding as recommended in the superintendent's budget, I'm estimating that at the end of the next fiscal year, so the budget year we're discussing now, we'll be at 1.8 million in that reserve fund. So that gives us 2.2 months of claims in reserve, which is livable. And that's, again, assuming that we don't have any extraordinary high claim year. So I do want to caveat that. So if you look at the bottom section of the chart that I just handed out, and this is what Mr. Perigini was, was referring to. So when we have to prepare our budget for 2122, assuming that we have $1.8 million in that trust fund at the end of 2122, like 2021, the budget year we're discussing, what we would have to do in order to fund contributions to equal claims in the 2122 year is increase the contribution by $1.2 million. And so the impact of that would be when we request our budget in 2122, we have to request 1.64% just to make sure that we don't run out of funds for our medical trust reserve. So it's really two things happen if you're not funding contributions equal to claims. One is that you drive down your reserve. But two, in the year that you have to start increasing contributions to equal claims, it becomes a bigger budget request.
Thank you, Vincent. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's a good question, Anne. It seems like it was just today, but we experienced this situation, I want to say several years ago, where, and you might know the numbers better than I do. I'm getting lost in forests of trees and all these numbers the last couple of weeks. So I can't even remember what we talked about seven years ago with this particular. But I do recall, although it was a calculated and coordinated plan at that time between the board then, because such a high balance, to contribute less to the trust fund over a few years. And it did come down to, to I believe, at the end of one school year, I believe it was just under $1 million. Was nine, do you have it on there?
So if you look at the, the sheet with a lot of red on it,
Yep.
bottom, on the right-hand side, you'll see that there's the trust fund balances at the end of each of the years.
So, so yeah, so the point is that, the following operating budget year, do you remember what the town increase was to that trust fund, what we asked for?
We had it increased two years in a row. I believe one was around three and a half, and one was 5%. But I'll tell you exactly what they were because we have it in the book, just kidding.
And again, this is more for history for all board members, especially new ones. This is not a new situation that we could find ourselves into, but just want to get a little clarity what happened.
So the, the final budgets approved by the town council in 1415 and 1516 were the impacted years. So the approval of 1415 was 3.61%. And the following year was 3.5%. So those were the years we had to adjust up to get our contributions to equal our claims.
Got it. And that bought it above, the first year bought it at, or just above, two months' reserves. And then following year, brought up a little further.
Right. And then in successive years, that fund started to build up, and now we're starting to go the other way.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Maciana. Is there any questions from the board on the proposed amendment? Yes, Anne?
I, I still have more questions and comments to make, but keeping with the medical trust fund, so is the amount in the superintendent's proposed budget for funding our medical trust fund, is it's to keep us at current levels or to, will it, in your expert opinion? And I know that you're not a soothsayer or anything. But in your opinion, does it start to increase our reserves or does it just hold them flat?
The way it's budgeted is to, claims and contributions will be equal. So if it all works out the way, and I don't have a crystal ball, to your point, but it's just to keep our reserve balance next year what it is at the end of this year.
Which is projected to be about 3.5?
2.7 is where we are now, so.
Uh, no, I'm talking months of reserve.
Actually, yes, it is 3.65, based on its projection.
Months of reserve.
And 2.7 million dollars is where we're projecting we'll end this year.
Right. So, so that's one issue that I have with this proposed amendment that's on the table. But there are others. Like Adam's proposed budget that's coming up next to talk about. This proposed budget also takes out one of the halftime special ed positions that Tracy Hussey spent some time explaining to us at two budget meetings ago, I think. And so I have issues with that because when our personnel are telling us that they need some of these things to service our students appropriately, I heed that call. I take it seriously. Library supply. I mean, we're talking about, or Mr. Bester has been advocating for less technology, but library books too, periodicals. Do we want our kids to be reading? That's a small number. Maintenance supply. I think maintenance supply is ill-advised to take out of that fund because it allows us to provide more of our maintenance to be done in-house, which actually increases efficiency. Heat and energy, I don't know. We had some discussion on heat and energy. If we, just off the top of my head, I don't see heating costs going down anytime soon. Everything goes up. Instructional supplies. Student activities. So if there's a 11,000 decrease in this proposed, proposed budget for student activities, does that counter the 12,000 for the girls' ice hockey? Or is that a different line item? That's a question.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe Faith stated that, that, so, just so we're all clear, in case folks in the audience got lost, these, correct from wrong Faith, all these line items are still being increased. Correct?
They're either being held at 2019 levels or increased.
Okay. So for student activities account, I believe you stated, and I apologize, I don't remember the first, in superintendent's original budget for student activities, what the number was. So basically, you're keeping that number flat the current year. So you're proposing to take the $11,247 increase for student activities and put that towards the Blades program?
Yes, that was mostly holding stipends at current levels.
Okay, so.
Stipends for?
Coaches.
And?
So.
Teachers?
No, it's not a teachers account.
Sometimes who are?
No.
Running like the best buddies program and stuff like that?
Holding stipends at current levels. I'm not taking away from the stipends that are now being paid. So suggesting that we take away the stipends?
No, my question is, is it more than coaches, though? Sometimes it's those other activities?
I, do you have your budget book? You can look up one 17 and see the description.
I was just given this a few minutes ago, so.
It's in the budget book.
Small amounts for travel and conferences. I could see some of that. Capital equipment is, is in our budget?
I have a question on that.
Or is that a capital expense? It's in our operating budget?
Yeah, it is. It's different from the capital budget because there are some capital purchases that happen, but, no? Is this mostly for maintenance of capital equipment?
That account funds the Energy Performance Contract and contractual. Plus, we use it to make purchases, things like homeboats, P C's. Any amount that's in that budget is there?
So I have a question. Thank you, Vincent. So I, you know, I'll turn it back to you. But so Faith, I, I know Mr. Bestor was up earlier about the, the technology. Was it your intent mostly from that account to put off some technology purchases to have a better chance to study the usage, or?
I understand that the energy contract is in there, and it's, we're bound to it. This still allows an increase of $19,877. And how that is spent, I, I'm, I, I feel like I'm already kind of, you know, getting into the weeds beyond what we're being asked to do as, as a Board of Education. But, you know.
Understood, I just.
Is there?
Sorry, I'm going to turn it back to you.
But yes.
I, I mean, I have many of the same issues that are going to be the same as when we get to Adam's proposed budget also. So I'm kind of taking it out on you first, Faith. Sorry.
This is, if I could just pause for a second and for those in the audience, first of all, I want to thank you all for sticking through, through this. And, and I also want to thank the board members so far. I am very encouraged by the level of the quorum that's been held tonight, and basically across all the meetings. And the fact that you all have been taking time to come through this budget and make your arguments so far. So I do know it's, I appreciate the work you're doing. And for folks out there watching in the audience, I think it's positive to know that the board's trying to look at every possible crumb and angle. And, you know, we have opinions. We're trying to do the best we can with, with what we have. So, so thank you for the discussion so far. Any other questions from the board members on the proposed amendment? Mr. Grippo?
I just had a quick question since Mr. Maciana just gave us, or regave us all of the medical benefit trust information. If we were to change the medical trust reserve contribution to the level that Mrs. Helen had recommended of, I think it was 350,000, down from 689,000, would my calculation be correct that our claim months in reserve at the end of 2021 would remain at 3.19 months? Is my math correct on that? Instead of dropping below three?
You can do that off the top of your head.
We have the magic eight ball. It's okay.
I'm going to give you credit for, it's going to be better than 2.16, and it's going to be all of 3.36. So. Ground numbers probably in there.
Okay. I just, okay, thank you.
I'll check the math later.
Any other board members comment on the current motion? Before I turn it over to the audience? Yes, Faith?
I, I'd just like to say that, you know, we have been, you, you all, this is my, I can't say I'm a we from years prior, have been working on very lean budgets dictated by, pretty much dictated by the town council. And I just think it's appropriate for the board to kind of chart its own destiny and not wait for the town council to tell us what we're going to cut. So perhaps that was part of my thinking in trying to be proactive in identifying areas.
Thank you, Faith. Are there any members from the audience? Mrs. Burnham?
Faith, I'm glad you brought that up because that's my concern as I listen to all this. Having lived in a different town for many years, the town council always cuts said budgets, no matter what town in Connecticut you're in. So my concern is, is that, just that, take a deep breath and think about if the town council, in spite of your good faith, Faith, attempt, still cuts, which in my past experience, that might still happen. Just then, sort of, what do you do when you have no meat left on your bone, so to speak? Just, I'm not opposed to some of the cuts. I just have concerns of what comes down the pike.
Thank you, Mary. Any other members in the public? CNN, there's, oh, Miss Natalia, no, go ahead. No, 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 please.
I have, actually, I have a request. And, and it's, I, it's very, this process is very confusing and unclear to me. And, and I know I've been getting some text messages from this crew over here, which, which agrees with me that the process is very unclear. And, and I think that Ms. Hamm was, was clear in her proposed amendment that it would include the $12,600 for the girls' hockey. And I'm just wondering if, as we move forward, there may or may not be additional amendments or proposals or things of that nature. If, if for the benefit of me and, and for these girls who are just very new to this process, if you could make clear whether that proposal at the time, and I know I'm asking a lot, includes A, the base $12,600, which, you know, for funding of the, the fee, or if it includes both A and B, which would be the enhanced funding, I will say the transportation. So A would be the base of $12,600, and then B would be, you know, the base plus the transportation, which would, which would allow it to be recognized as a, as an official sport. So that's just my request. I very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Just so, so for the record, I'll just quickly respond before we take a vote. So no proposal at all includes anything other than the $12,600 for the fee. There is no additional funds proposed as of yet for anything for transportation in any of these budget proposals. of these budget proposals. So, we'll see where this goes. So, unless there's any other audience comment, I'm gonna call for a vote. From the board, on the current motion as amended, which is, move the Cheshire Board Education to amend the proposed 2020-2021 budget as proposed by the Finance Committee to reflect an increase of $1,846,043 over the 2019-2020 Board of Education budget. This reflects a reduction of $1,127,498 from the proposed superintendent's budget of $76,330,52 for a total of 2020-2021 Board of Education budget of $75,202,554, or 2.52% total increase over the 2019-2020 Board of Education budget. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion fails to pass. We're now back to the original motion. Does the board want me to read it again, or are you good? Let me read it again, just so that, sorry, Andrew. I wanted to just be clear for the audience, so this amendment has failed, we're going back to the original motion, which came out of Finance Committee, which is, move the Cheshire Board of Ed, submit to the town manager a budget for fiscal year 2020-2021, totaling $75,302,143, a reduction of $1,027,909 from the superintendent's proposed budget. Is there a discussion? Mr. Martelli?
Could I, I'd like to make an amendment?
Please do.
See if I can get a compromise here. I'd like to move the Cheshire Board of Education to amend the proposed 2020-2021 budget as proposed by the Finance Committee to reflect an increase of $2,146,043 over the current 2019-2020 Board of Education budget. This reflects a reduction of $827,498 from the proposed superintendent's budget for a total 2020-2021 Board of Education budget of $75,502,554, or a 2.93% total increase.
Thank you, Mr. Martelli. Is there a second? Mr. White, seconds. And again, just for, for the board, the motion is to amend the proposed 2020-21 budget as proposed by the Finance Committee to reflect an increase of $2,146,043 over the 2019-2020 Board of Education budget. This reflects a reduction of $827,498 from the proposed superintendent's budget for a total 2020-21 Board of Education budget, $75,502,554, or a 2.93% total increase. So your reduction is much less than the Finance Committee's initial proposal.
So, was that 3.9, Tony, or? 3.9, or 2.9?
2.93, did I say 3.93?
2.93.
2.93 increase.
Increase.
And you have some line items. Thank you.
No, you didn't say it, I heard it.
Okay, thank you.
I like these prepared spreadsheets.
Yeah, thank you, folks, for doing that. Discussion. So I'll start, I saw the number one line item, which is medical trust fund. You are proposing, if I read this correctly, not completely removing the increase of 600-plus thousand, but bringing it down to, is this a reduction of 339,000 from the 689?
Yes.
Essentially a 350...
It's a total of 300,000 remaining.
So 300,000 out of the proposed 689 increase.
Right.
Got it.
Could I go through my...
350.
My proposal?
Please.
Please?
I would appreciate it.
Okay. All right, so let's see what we can do here. So first of all, I'd like to thank the girls' hockey team for being here this evening, and, you know, I think what keeps getting left off here, as a board, we received a number for the program, but not for transportation. So without having that information, in order to put something into the budget for the transportation, I'm kind of at a loss as to what we could actually put in as placeholder for that line item. However, this proposal does include the full $12,600 for the Blades. Additionally, it includes a $300,000 funding allocation to the medical trust fund. I don't think it's the right thing to do to zero out that line item, so leaving $300,000 in there. And then, to special education, special education Tracy, I'd say I'd like to thank you for the presentation that you did the other evening. Special education's near and dear to my heart, just wanna get that out there. And this proposal includes the funding for all the positions that you requested, the .5 special education teacher at Darcy School, the funding for the .5 special education teacher for the transition program for the 18 to 21-year-olds. I think it's a great program over at Yellow House, so now we could offer more opportunities there. And then also for the .5 board certified behavioral analyst, and then also for the non-certified staffing needs for the math interventionist for Dodd, I have a Dodd student who could use that, as well as the two hall monitors for the district schools. This also takes into consideration the three retirements, savings to the district of $90,000. That would, that would be $30,000 per retirement. Going through all the presentations, for those of you who haven't been there, there are historically far more than three retirements per year, and so this takes into that nine, for $90,000 savings. You know, I'm kinda the freshman up here, but when we ran for the Board of Education, I did hear a lot about us trying to keep spending under control, and one thing that hasn't been said here tonight is that we're not cutting anything beyond what the current funding level is for all programs. So if you look at, to see where, identify different cuts throughout the budget, that's not reducing any of the funding that's currently in the budget for this fiscal year. So this is just a reduction in the proposed, the superintendent's proposed increase of the existing budget moving forward. So with that being said, the superintendent put up a 4.05% increase, I did a little bit of math, hopefully it's correct, Finn, correct me if I'm wrong. When I graduated from Cheshire High School in 2000, there was a total school population of 4,934 students. This year, 2020, there are 4,105 students in the district, a reduction of 829 students. At the time of the 22,000-year budget, it was, the total Board of Education budget was $41,029,761, and this year, the proposed budget is 73, or I'm sorry, the current budget is $73,356,511, which is a $32,326,000 increase over the past 20 years. Huge amount of money, I understand that things get more expensive as time goes on, but I do think that we need to, at what point are we outpacing spending that we can afford as taxpayers in the town of Cheshire? So, again, did a little bit more math, so that's basically a $1.6 million per year increase over the past 20 years. Superintendent proposed a 4% increase this budget year, so my proposal is kind of me in a little bit more in the middle, and that would be a total increase of 2.93%, if I did that correctly. 2.93% total increase. There's various line items here, many of which are the same as Faith over here, but I'm not gonna cut things as drastically as she did. And again, with the girls' ice hockey, that is included in this budget.
Thank you, Andrew. Mr. Grippo?
Firstly, I'd like to comment, compliment the freshman on his, his excellent budget amendment, and if I could just point out, if I was doing the math correctly, your reduction of 339,000 at medical trust reserve is actually an increase of 350,000, which I think is better than what you intended. So I just wanted to say that, and I actually find this amendment reasonable, considering my recent revelation of Vin's medical benefit presentation several minutes ago. So I find I'll be looking at this very closely during discussion.
Any other, Mr. White, and then Ms. Harrigan.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank, thank Vin Massiana for the comments about the medical trust reserve, and I'm comfortable with that, with the, what is it, a $350,000 increase instead of a $700,000 increase, basically? Yeah, I'm comfortable with that, particularly based on what Vin had said, so I think I'll support this motion. Thank you, Andrew.
I'm sorry, Ms. Harrigan, please go ahead.
Yeah, so I think this goes a long ways towards coming to some sort of compromise. I would add that, yes, we have had a reduction in student body over the years, but we have had a huge increase in our special ed population, and the cost to service those students have come upon, come along with, with all of that, and that's part of the reason that we're so constrained by our budget. I wanted to ask a question of probably Jeff, Superintendent Solan, about the retirements? Is, is, I mean, I was kind of appalled at six, counting on six net retirements, but is three reasonable to expect, or are we still taking kind of a risk with?
I only know of one, but three is, you know, below our historical average, we're closer to five.
Thank you.
To your point, you don't, you don't know.
Yeah. Well, we don't know a lot of this. And just so that people know, the town will know more of this when it comes a few months down the road. We're much more, we have much better numbers, but to Mrs. Berman's point, they may still decrease our budget, and so I think it behooves us to let the girls' hockey team know that much of this hangs with the town council and what they come back to us with for a budget number. So you may have to take your presentations to the town council meetings, and fight, fight for us, fight for our budget.
Thank you, Ann. Any other board members? Faith?
Andrew, thank you for a very well-researched and presented alternative. Just to say that I am comfortable with the $350,000 addition to the trust, and happy to see the special ed numbers restored as well as the aunt of a very special, special needs student.
Thank you, Faith. Anyone else? So, having heard these proposals, and knowing that all the board members have asked a lot of thorough questions, not just through these meetings, but of the superintendent and Mr. Massiana, who are last, what seems like an attorney, but basically the past month or so. I, Andrew, I find, I find your proposal much more palatable. I'm happy to fact that you revisited the medical trust fund reserve. So I wanna just say a few things. One is, I will support this. I've been on this board, this is my 11th year, seems like longer than that. I'm not complaining, it's been, it's been quite the adventure. I've personally voted, and this might affect me in next election, to, to add $16 million to this budget over the course of 10 years. When I came on board in 2009 and '10, it was a $59 million budget, and throughout those years, I've supported various increases, decreases, it's even been a year, I believe, when I actually voted to add on to the superintendent's budget proposal. So when I make these decisions, they're not made in a vacuum, they're not throwing darts at a dartboard. I know the accounts fairly well, I look at trends and things, I'm still comfortable with the fact that all these accounts are still increasing, although a little bit less than superintendent's increase by and large. I don't believe this proposal is going to cause a detriment for delivering curriculum to our students. I don't think it jeopardizes our quality of education in any way. I also align by the fact that you restored a half of the BCBA specialists for special education. I, I think our, our group there, led by Tracy Hussey and others, have done a magnificent job with special education. I think Cheshire's become the, if I could brag, the destination for families that wanna move into town, because unlike so many other towns, we can offer to keep most special education students in town, so long as our services cover their needs. And the work by this group began several years ago to reduce the dependency on outplacement areas, which costs a fortune. I believe the number that was probably saved over the years was close to $3 million by bringing, keep trying to keep the special education kids that can't stay in town for our services. So I know it's, it's a well-optimized function, I see the results from that program, so I do know that the existing staff does divvy up the work of the BCBA as it is, so I think by adding that half of a person back into the budget, it lets some of the staff breathe a little easier, and perhaps gives those students a little bit more specialized attention, tension quicker than normals. I support that. With regards to the, to the girls' hockey, I absolutely will support the 12,600, and I, I struggle to come up with a transportation number, unlike these other accounts where I have some history and insight to these things, I don't for transportation and girls' hockey. It's not so much from the parents, I think you guys have articulated some of that over the last week or so. But, you know, I have to rely on this case, since this is more of an unknown to me, is this, you know, Mr. Trefon did not make a recommendation to the board to fund transportation for this line item. This being Mr. Solan, you know, he also articulated that, you know, this time does not recommend funding transportation. So without having any kind of estimates from our staff, it's difficult for me to get behind a number behind that. However, if I think this is gonna go the way it goes, and, you know, the, the optimist in me says that by lowering these fees, while it doesn't cover transportation, it should, I hope, open the floodgates for other participants, and I wouldn't be surprised by this time next year if you've all exceeded the eight members plus, and by then, I would hope that the staff and administration, if that happens, or even if it doesn't, look into the true cost of transportation, report back to the board that if a recommendation was made to fund transportation, what would that look like, best case, worst case scenario? I just don't have that right now, and the board doesn't either. So I can't really get behind that, but I certainly will support the girls' hockey funding for the costs. Rather than continue monologuing, I just wanna say that I, I will support this, and I wanna thank every single board member that has put the time and effort into reviewing these budgets, questioning it. I really enjoyed the discussion tonight, I'm sure most of you out there probably did not, but it's almost 9:15. I wanna thank the staff and administration for all the work they've done on this, I'm sure there's more work to come. And before I turn over more question and comment, I just do want to add, it's, while history has shown us in this town that no matter what budget leaves the Board of Ed, that by the time it goes to the town manager, the town council, it'll always come back as what we expect it to be. However, I don't believe there's any guarantee the town council will cut for the sake of cutting. I gotta believe, after all the work this board, most of the board members went through on this budget, the line items presented, the amount of detail that went behind this, I would hope that by the time the town manager gets this, and the town council, they'd be hard-pressed to reduce it any further. But then again, I can't speak for them. I know Mr. Chairman Oris has promised myself and the board that it, as always, will be a fair review, they want to ensure that we get adequate funding, so we'll have further discussions on that, but for folks out there, if you wanna follow along, we'll let you know when those budget discussions happen in a couple of weeks. That being said, board members, any other comments on this proposed amendment?
I have one more comment.
Go ahead, Ann.
And my comment speaks to the transportation. Is it not possible that we would look at it this year?
After it comes back from the town council?
Yeah.
That's a, so the question...
If we get a good number back from the town council, I don't see why we would necessarily need to wait all the way until next budget season.
Terrific point. Again, the pessimist in me thinks that it's gonna be next year. However, Mr. Solan, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, you obviously will need to digest this number over the next few days, but I would imagine that even with this change, even though it's a 2.1, 2.2 million dollar increase, I know the answer's gonna be C, but I would hope that by, we get a, time to get a budget back from the town itself, that maybe there's a little more estimation on transportation costs for girls' ice hockey by then, and if there's a chance, we could discuss it before the board has to adopt and specify... And if there's a chance we could discuss it before the board has to adopt and specify which line items will be affected by the town's budget, maybe we have some more information by then?
Yeah, the estimate, I mean, I already kind of gave a rough estimate, but by the end of April, CIC, as I mentioned in our last meeting, prohibits us from soliciting students about their participation, middle school students about their participation in athletics, until April. So we would have a better sense at the end of April how many students are looking to participate, which would certainly, you know, better codify our transportation numbers, and it would also give us a more complete picture of where we are financially when the council, you know, puts the, makes their final determination of what our budget would be. So at that point, you'll have a better, a clearer view.
Thank you, Mr. Sol. I think what would be helpful too, for the board, is the estimate certainly helps, but you know, I learned some information from the parents tonight regarding number of trips they make during the week, if maybe by May, before the board has to adopt the budget from the town, if, just get a general sense of, you know, what a typical schedule looks like, number of trips, I'm just trying to really understand the scope of transportation if we were to fund it. But even with the estimate, you know, I know it's rough, so nonetheless, Ann, it sounds like we could definitely talk about this again in about a month or two. So thanks for raising that.
Mr. White?
I don't, you may have mentioned it, I may have missed it, but generally speaking, I think it's, it might be the town charter, or just tradition, that the town manager hands the budget over to the town council on March 10th, and then meetings will happen over the next, over the following few weeks before they adopt it sometime in late April. I forget what the charter date is now, but-
15th.
April 15th?
April 30th.
April 30th. Yeah, it used to be April 7th.
15th is our-
Anyway, so that's just the window in which the, all the budget meetings will be happening. Presumably, I imagine most will be happening in, happening in town hall between March 10th and April 30th.
Thank you, Tim. Any other board members? Seeing as there's not any comment from the audience.
I have some paper to hand out to you, if you want.
Please, yes, we'll definitely take that. Thank you again.
Hi, my name is Martha Lindner. I've spoken to you before, I just wanted to make one comment. The girls and the parents that left earlier were actually all our parents on the Blades team that are from Amity, and they came all the way up here tonight to support us, and they're being supported by their school and the way that we're asking to be funded. So they had to go home because they're tired.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks.
Thank you so much for coming out, though. Yes, Mr.?
Mr. Best, Jack Bestor, 45 dress. I'm disappointed, of course, that the Chromebooks still seem to be in the new budget, and I'm not sure what line item the, if I remember right, the line item for capital equipment 732 had $350,000 for new Chromebooks in a 900 and something thousand dollar line item budget. I'm not sure where the smart boards were on the budget, I looked for them, but I couldn't find them. And I don't believe that's a proven technology either. I certainly would be more than happy to trade any of those items for travel expenses for the hockey team.
Thank you, Mr. Bestor. Any other members of the audience? Ms. Lindner?
If, to support the busing, I think that's such a critical piece, because then you can make it an official sport, and then you get the benefit of being a real sport for the whole town and other sports. So if the blocker is, we're not really sure how many are up and coming, there's nothing preventing us from providing information to you on that, we can do our own research. Would that be helpful? Is that something you could take as an input and legitimately use to support, you know, and help frame out the impact of busing?
That number, I based the original estimate on a broad range of number of students. So yeah, it could run from 8,000 at the lowest amount to up to 20. Even if I knew that, I still don't know what the rest of our budget looks like. So I think it's still my recommendation that it's more prudent to review that in May than it is to review it, you know, tomorrow, today, you know.
If I understood you correctly, though, you said you couldn't approach students to get a feeling of what the numbers are?
Correct, that's accurate.
Okay. I'm under no such limit.
Sure, sure.
As a guy, and I can ask anyone.
Right.
Would it be useful?
No approach before April 18th.
I'm sorry?
No approach before April 18th.
Maybe for you, not for me.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I can do whatever I want.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm asking, would that be helpful for you if we said, you know, put some numbers around it? If I could-
Not at this point.
Would not?
Now, because I can give a very broad swath estimate. The issue, I don't know, is what the rest of the budget looks like until we get it back from the board, or from the council, excuse me. So, you know, at this point, you know, this proposal is on the table, you know, if the board wanted to postpone, but I think we're going to have a clearer picture in May of, first of all, we'll have definitive numbers from student athletes, and we'll know what the rest of the budget looks like. So the board can make a more informed decision about whether or not they want to fund transportation at that point.
Okay, okay. I think we'll take it on ourselves to at least do some recon. I would like to know what the ground swell is coming up.
Sure.
And if we're going this far, it's, it is pennies, it's like a .01%. To go that little extra distance, to get busing funded, to make it a real sport, so aside from all the great reasons for doing the girls, it's better for all of us, it's better for our property values to have the legitimate, you know, the prestige of having a girl-supported sport as a real thing, instead of having girls leaving for private schools or considering other options. We've come this far, and as a budgeting exercise, I would think that you would want to know what those numbers are coming up, and if you can't get them for whatever reason that I don't fully understand, we'll, we'll go get those numbers. You can do with what you will. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
So the flyer that was just handed out is asking why isn't girls' ice hockey a sport? And so I'm just wondering, did we ever consider it not a, is there some sort of legal definition where we have to officially call it a sport, and if we do, is that something else than what we're doing now? Then, so-
It's still a sport, obviously, I mean, you know, whatever you want to call it, it's still a sport. It is a club. It's not an official sport, because you would have to provide transportation. Right now, we're required to provide equal opportunities for boys and girls, which we have done in total to complete Title IX. But we are, again, I think this budget also recommends providing funding for girls' hockey to include the participation rate equal to the boys. You know, and again, I think the group has already said it'll be reviewed again in May, so.
So I guess what I'm asking is, so is sport the wrong word in this case? Like, I think we all recognize that girls' ice hockey is a sport.
Yes.
Is it recognizing it as like an official team as opposed to-
Right, a team.
-being a co-op?
Yeah, Cheshire High School team, it's a club.
So that's sort of the-
It's a club at Cheshire High School.
Level.
From a co-op team.
I know you might have answered this last week, or Mr. Trefon did, at what, at what point is it based on number of participants? I thought I heard Mr. Trefon say that, how many of our students would we need to have to field a full team? That's not part of a co-op.
I want to go back a second, because I don't, I haven't heard the girls say they don't want to be a co-op team. I think they're happy right now competing with their peers from Amity and North Haven. So I don't, I don't want to ascribe that desire onto them if that doesn't exist. But CIC outlines how many student athletes from school have to be participating before you have to opt out of a co-op and have your own team. I don't know off the top of my head exactly what that number is, but regardless, like, you know, Amity funds it as a team, North Haven doesn't, you know, each town does its own thing. This, we're kind of, at this point, a hybrid for next year, you know, that's the recommendation. The, I think, you know, everybody on this board, and certainly, you know, myself included, would want to fund transportation and the myriad of other items that are before us. Right now, you know, we're in this position where we're funding to make the participation fee equitable, and we'll continue to look at this situation in the spring, when we have a better sense of what our budget is.
So if I'm understanding correctly, then the desire of the girls' hockey team is to be funded as a team without being officially a team? Is that correct?
Well, they've kind of amended that to be, no, they want to be a team that includes, and that would include transportation.
So the question-
CHS team.
So I, so it comes to Trefon putting up a number of participants, and he said that we're just nowhere near that level, I don't remember off the top of my head, but if we offer, if transportation is offered, does that bona fide as a team?
Yes. It doesn't matter whether you're co-op or not, you know, we would be providing equal resources.
Okay.
Can I just, quick comment?
We're, just a, yes, Ann, just a point of order, we were done with public input, we're kind of almost going back to discussion, which allow for another minute or two, but then we have to vote on the motion on the table, so please.
I was just going to say, I think that if we all recognize that this is a process that we're going through, and just, you know, we don't need to rush things, we need good information so that we can make good decisions.
Thank you, Ann. I now call a vote for the amended motion, which I just typed up on my computer, hang on, even my computer's going to sleep. The motion is that move that the Cheshire Board of Education amend the proposed 2020, 2021 budget as proposed by the Finance Committee to reflect an increase of $2,146,043 over 2019, 2020 Board of Education budget. This reflects a reduction of $827,498 from the proposed superintendent's budget for a total 2020, 2021 Board of Education budget of $75,502,554, or a 2.93% increase. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. The budget has been passed. Before I call a motion to adjourn, again, I can't thank everyone enough. Again, special thanks to Mr. Natali, all the parents, all the girls. Again, I really meant it earlier, I think the board agrees, you all have set the bar when it comes to bringing things, situation like this to the board and trying to work to get something done. So I hope that at least tonight's unanimous support to fund, at least the cost of girls' hockey is a step in the right direction. All I ask is that you stay tuned, follow us on this journey through May. I'm sure the town council might have some questions on this as well when it gets to them. So again, thank you, everyone, thank you, staff, Mr. Solon, your staff, board. With that being said, I have a motion to adjourn. Made by Mr. Grippel, seconded by Mr. White. All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.